I'm gonna bring this Dunbar Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Full Select Board present, Town Administrator, Police Chief, Town Moderator, Transfer Station Supervisor here. And Leo is recording these meeting minutes for the benefit of the public when the Nickerson will upload them. I have some old business gentleman of the Dunbar Board of Selectmen meeting. I was not present last meeting, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes of our total fifteen as amended.
Yeah, second. Okay, motion's made. Second in all favor. Abstained. Motion passed. Here you go, Michael. Okay. I'm gonna open up for a quick public comment to start here if anybody from the public would like to say anything. Anybody in the room? Okay. No public comment at this time. Going back town business, Patrick Woody discussed equipment purchase. I guess you're first on the agenda.
Yes. So, as you know, we've given money by tax pay to buy a BACO.
Yeah.
I've been searching, looking, matter of fact, while I was on vacation, the road agent and Pete went and looked at one, Jeff and Pete went and looked at one for me. Wasn't a prize, needed somewhere else. What I find is I'm having some trouble finding them now. There was tons of them before for fifteen grand, having trouble now. So, I found one, but it's nineteen five. So, what I'd like to do is take some money from my regular operating budget and put it towards a purchase. But I like to have the board's blessing to do that.
Is it out of your equipment section of your operating budget?
Yeah, I can expend it on that. I don't have that in that particular line. It would just have to come out of my budget, but it would go to that line in my budget.
So, have you used your equipment expense budget line all up is what I'm trying to get at for the year?
There's only a thousand dollars in that line.
I thought you had.
Oh, I have a maintenance line.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about, I guess.
The maintenance line, I think, is gonna be pretty well shot.
You have a report here.
There's a, there's equipment maintenance line and then there's an equipment purchase line. It ultimately would come out of that line. It would just overrun that line. And the same thing while I'm talking here. The lift gate for the back of the town truck is, we have thirty-five hundred. The numbers I've got are coming in about a thousand more than what we have, so I. I mean, there's money in my budget. I just want your blessing to take it from my budget and put it towards these purchases.
Now, you'll be able to cover all of your employees' costs here, any overtime you're gonna incur to the end of the year?
Yeah, because we had an employee get done. And we're not using his hours now, I'm gonna have quite a bit on that side. It would cover it. I mean, I'm still watching it for a post. We're not going crazy spending, but there'll be, there'll be money there for it.
And you've calculated out all your hours and everything you're gonna need?
Yep.
And so, Woody, has the, having people dump their own recyclables, does that save on labor a little bit?
Yes, actually, what it's done, I mean, we've been able to limit a few people, you know, limit. Unfortunately, we've had to change some hours for them. But the other side with people dumping their own products. It allows the guys inside not to be under, sucks their gun to get the product bailed. They can bail the product at a, you know, at a normal pace, let the bales set. And ultimately, what it does, it gives us heavier veil weights, and that's what we're looking for, is heavier weights. You know, when we ship a load, I have two loads I'm getting ready to ship. Things are based on weights. When I get the price, typically, it's based on forty-four thousand. Well, plastics, you know, I think it's forty thousand. That's a lot of plastic to get forty thousand pounds on a tractor trailer. So, you want your bales as heavy as possible. So, it works out. And the other thing it does, projects, things is always something to do, gives these guys opportunity to do that. So, yeah, they, they keep him busy, but it has, it's been a big stress reliever, really big.
What are you guys' thoughts on this?
What's that?
What's your thoughts on this using?
Yeah, well, I know he's got, it looks like sixty-eight, thirty-one, and his equipment maintenance and a thousand in equipment. Says, it says department equipment and maintenance. So, I don't have a problem. That's what it takes to get the piece of equipment he needs, rather than putting it off and that money ends up going back in the jail.
Right. I think what Bob was saying is maybe trying to use your equipment and maintenance funds and those, those funds first, and then dip into the balance of your budget. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I don't think it really matters. Money is in the budget. It's, budget is the guideline. To shift it within, within the department, no big deal. But the thing is, I'm worried about the other piece of equipment, the, of the new truck coming in under, over. How much more you think that'll cost?
It's looking at some preliminary number, the numbers I have, they're, we have thirty-five, because I thought the trucks were.
Right.
And it'll look in, it's forty-five to five, but I think it's gonna be a little more towards the forty-five.
With this year, with this year's money you have, can you cover both of them and the trailer?
So, you're driving by a thousand dollars per.
Yes. That's what it's looking like. There's a potential, one company is looking, they have a display model that's in stock. If it will fit my truck, I'll know tomorrow. I called them several times, but I'll know tomorrow. If it fits the truck, that would be a substantially discounted rate. So, it might even be, you know, at the thirty-five, but I don't wanna wait till the last minute to try and figure it out.
Is the company that we use to outfit our ten wheeler?
Yes, they're, they're giving a price, and then a couple of other companies are giving a price as well.
So, you're getting quotes in. Okay.
One of them was, one of them's a verbal and two of them are written.
I have no problem. I think he, he's, he's coming to us for the judiciousness of using the things, as long as he can get his work, his payroll.
All right, I guess you have consents to the board. I appreciate you bringing it to us as a department head and reviewing it with us. And as long as you don't have to go on to next year with one of those items, I think that's another option, you know, but.
Right. The, in the maintenance, I've got some outstanding bills. Been in talk with the vendor that I want, they need the bills prior to the end of the year, because I got smacked with a nine hundred, oh, we knows, I got smacked with a nine hundred dollar bill that was actually last year that went into this year because the bill never came in until this year. And John Wigan as well.
Yeah, we'd like to get them before the very end of the year.
So, that's what I told him.
So, I could encumber it if anything, so.
Okay, anything else?
Yes, another quick thing was hazardous waste day. Obviously, it's this weekend. My wife, with the approval from Town Administrator, covered me for a meeting with the Town of Bow. And basically, at that meeting, they discussed the layout. I had met with them one other time, just one member and the Public Works Director, because it's at the Bow Public Works, there's a lot more room. Basically, they did a layout, took some suggestions, but at this meeting, they finalized the traffic pattern, where things are gonna go, the layout, and how everything's gonna work. So, that's what that meeting was about. What time, you know, we need to be over there, the Dunbar needs to be over there, so that's how that was.
I think the next thing on the agenda kind of has to do with you too, is Fred Mullen for Household Waste Hazers.
Yep, so, well, I mentioned Taleen today, I just sent a quick email. My thought is this, is that he's technically, we've been, it's been kind of a gray area in the past. We've never really done nothing for it. But I think we really should be compensating an employee who does something like, because I don't think you're supposed to do it free as a, I don't know, I'm not a labor guy, but. It's one day, and I think, you know, if I have an employee that, of the town that's working at that event, that we should be paying them. That's my only thought on it. He hasn't said nothing, doesn't, you know, that I'm mentioning anything to you. That's just kind of my two cents on it, that we should be, like I said.
So, he's under your department as a tenth employee from the Town of Dunbar?
Yeah, well, he's also.
He'd like to propose that for the selection.
Yeah, just as, you know, because he's always there for hazardous waste day, and I know in the past Linda's worked for me, and we've never compensated her either, you know? I'm thinking that we should have been doing that right away. I just don't wanna see us getting in a bind, you know, down the road. Yes, yeah, it just comes out of a pot time line. It's only one day, and the rate would have to be set by the Board of Selectmen. And he's there for typically like seven hours.
Attendant is, I'll put my glasses on before I read you wrong. Thirteen twenty-six, the second level is thirteen ninety-two, and the top level step three is fourteen sixty-one. You're proposing the thirteen twenty-six?
Whatever the board feels would be the correct thing to shoot. I just think that, you know, from this point forward, I know we've done it in the past, may not have been right, but going forward, I think we should, you know, someone.
He's been an institution out there helping out.
I don't have any issue with it myself, if it's in the budget as well. What about the rate? You guys wanna stick with the starting rate?
I, I would go smack in the middle. He's got experience. He's not starting green. He knows his stuff.
Thirteen ninety-two, you agree with that thought?
Yeah, you know, and there's step three on there, which isn't that much more money, so, and.
But what are you saying? Is it's not always Fred though?
Yeah, it's just, you know.
He does it a lot.
The rate you're approving for is this individual, and he ends up doing a lot of volunteer stuff for the town on behalf of the town, and he gets nothing for it, so.
The thing is, it's not that he's, he's green. He's been doing this for years. He's been an institution out there, am I correct?
Right, and like I said in the past, I know, you know, people that were employees of the town haven't been compensated, and I think it was wrong to must not do that.
For Fred, I guess, we'll just go right to the top tier then.
Only because he's got past experience.
Sixty-one, so I'll put it right in here.
Thank you, Dave. Can you also make a motion?
Yep. I'll make a motion to name Fred Mullen as a transfer station attendant, tenth employee, and pay rate of fourteen sixty-one at the step three wage scale.
I second that.
Motion's been made. Second in all favor.
Alright.
Okay. We'll sign it now, and then Fred can just come in and sign it afterwards.
That's it. This, this step is commensurate with his experience.
Okay. That being taken care of, the next thing on our agenda is for any moderator, last update for the general election coming up.
Wait, we, we've got an election coming up?
You wanna skip it?
No.
Make it by acclamation.
Woody, if you can stay for a little bit of talk on this next one.
Absolutely. So, I don't, I don't have much new. The one thing I did wanna bring up that we haven't talked about before is that it's likely at this election that we'll also have official voting challengers, voter challengers, and we may also have observers. There, those are very different things. By RSA, town residents can challenge any voter at the polls, challenge their right to vote in Dunbar. And all, and those are the only people who can challenge, except that each political party can appoint an official challenger to be at the polls through the election day. So, and, and what I'm hearing through the grapevine is that it's likely that both parties will do that. So, we'll have, we'll have official challengers. They need to be close enough to the ballot clerks to be able to hear names as they are announced.
But still outside the rail?
But still outside, no. Nobody gets in the rail except us and the voters.
Okay.
Yeah. So, when we're setting up.
Makes it pretty tighter on that corner.
When we're setting up on Monday, we'll figure something out, even if it means bringing a step ladder and then sitting up on the bleachers that are folded in. This might be close enough. We'll, we'll figure that out though on Monday. We'll figure it out.
I don't think we want people with a step ladder.
Well, it's, it's, it's gonna be tight, and we're gonna need shoehorns to get everybody that we need in there. We also may have observers. Observers don't really have so official a status. And from the conversations about observers that I've been in, if I'm feeling that the observers are impeding the flow of traffic. I, I can ask them to leave. They don't have an official capacity. I would rather not do that. I would rather have everything be as transparent as it can be. But, but the space that we're working in is gonna be pretty tight with social distancing and us having two, two tables for ballot counters open. I also think we're gonna, we're gonna need two greeters, so, and Mike, I'm gonna ask you to do that throughout the day, but you'll have a partner to work with.
Okay.
And that's all the new stuff I've got.
I have, I have a couple of questions for you.
Okay.
Pencils, are you reusing those old pencils?
Yeah.
You are. So, enough time has lapsed on that. You guys are comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay, and we're gonna have a similar box of them to dump in. Are we throwing them this time? What are we doing?
I plan to put a box out to recycle them.
I'm not sure if you're gonna throw anything away.
Of course not.
We are, we do live in New Hampshire, don't we?
Yeah, there's a lot of wood in there.
We'll use them again.
Okay, the next thing is, we always take the ballots, and then we put them in one of the boxes.
Well, this time it'll only be one box, but yes.
So, do we need to continue doing that with COVID going around? Why can't we just observe people putting them in?
No, you've gotta take the ballot. You're, you're actually, in that moment, you are acting as an assistant moderator. And if the RSA clearly states, the voter will hand the ballot to the moderator or assistant who will put the ballot in the ballot box.
Why do you wanna see on TV people dropping them in boxes all the time?
I don't know.
It's because we're a hand count town, and in hand count towns, it's required that the moderator place the ballot in the ballot box.
Yeah, thank you.
We use people.
The machine count towns, in fact, and some of them, the voter themselves put the ballot right into the book counting machine.
In machine counts they can. In machine count towns, they don't have an out checklist.
I'm actually not talking about, I seen those electronic ones too. I'm talking, I see on TV dropping them right in.
Maybe a different state.
Walking by.
Yeah, it could be a different state.
On everywhere, I don't know.
We've got, we've got plastic gloves if you're concerned and you'd like to wear them.
And we have enough new face masks?
Um, I, I mentioned on the, when we had the election in September, that the KN ninety-fives, we don't have many of those at all. In fact, I think we'll have just enough to give to the new ballot clerks who never got one. I did ask everyone in September to hold on to theirs.
I didn't. I used it up.
They are comfortable.
They were, and that's why I continued to use it. And like Mike said, that's getting a little worn out, Dave, so I threw it, I think.
Um, we've got any number of these. Those would be available.
All right, that's all I had for questions. And are we removing the curtain? Is it gonna be the entire gym or?
We're gonna use the curtain apart, we're gonna have the curtain in the middle to use as, as part of a rail. But we're gonna expand into the other side of the gym deeper than we did last time.
So, we can snake lines around, potentially, snake lines around potentially, to snake a line around, it puts out, it puts out.
Linda, I had sent you an email to ask if you wanted to have Woody's guys assemble those chairs. Were those done?
He meant to, yeah, I meant to respond to you. Yeah, if they want to, there's only two, right? Only two bar stools came in, all four came, if they could.
Woody, do you think you guys could do that before the auction time?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Yeah, I didn't see anything back, Linda, but I wanted to get those done, so we'll fool around that morning.
Perfect, because I was gonna take them home and do them, so thank you.
And confirmed times for Monday? Who, what's that, four o'clock?
He will, he'll probably show up here about three thirty, is that what?
All the better, yeah.
Then be over there for four to get ready.
I should be here at three thirty. We're gonna be pre-processing absentee ballots till four, so I'll see you when you get here.
And it's on a quick note that I talked to a couple of selectmen before, those new posts that you have that got the pull-out strap, those stanchions.
Yeah.
That are having some kind of crate made, so it's a good thing that we didn't have it, because I just see you got a bunch more. And I, I actually talked to a gentleman, and he's gonna look at them when he comes to vote. But then afterwards, I'm gonna bring one over to him so he can kind of size it up and see, because they're, they're not gonna last in the cardboard boxes.
The boxes are pretty tough.
The boxes are pretty tender, so we needed to come up with something. So, he's gonna work us up a price, and I give it to the board and.
Great. These might be a slightly different size. That's something he will need to be thinking about.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll look at them and go from there.
And I would suggest not putting all of them in one box, because there'll be no human being.
It'll have some wheels on it or something. We're not lifting.
The last thing we have under here, Rainy, if you're all done with your section, is we're looking into maybe purchasing a storage container. And I wanted to bring it to the board tonight to talk about it roughly. We don't have final numbers on it, but it looks like an eight foot wide, eight foot six tall, twenty foot container. It's gonna be around twenty-three to twenty-five hundred dollars, dependent on, we've got a person looking at them that used to purchase them all the time. And we have stuff stored now in Judy's room, Linda's room, in the closet over there, and all our new stuff.
Where would you put it?
My thought is, Linda had asked about the school, but I don't like that idea, because they've already got five little sheds there, and it. You don't want it, I'm thinking, keep it right at the transfer station, and these are the ones that are picking it up to bring it there anyway. It'd be neat, clean, dry, and ready to go, and it would all be one area.
Do you think you have the room for that? Oh, yeah, we could find a spot.
And we have that money that we've been getting in for the COVID.
Well, we're, we've been awarded five thousand dollars for the nonprofit, and I think what we've spent so far, probably less than fifteen hundred dollars.
So, there's still enough money in that line?
And that's a done deal. What they do want is that we will have to follow up with a, a report of what was purchased for.
Don't forget we're gonna have the cares if for postage.
That's separate.
That's separate, but.
I anticipate that's gonna be about six thousand.
Not sure yet, but it's gonna be good.
Well, the last one was almost three.
Was it?
Yeah, so.
So, it'll, is that something you'd have room for down there, Woody?
Sure.
Find a spot.
Actually, makes it easier.
It's all one location of them.
Because you're always using the same individuals to come and set it up.
And then Linda will just have her small personal stuff to bring back and forth, which will be very small. She could do herself instead of hauling back bigger stuff.
And it'd be a great time saver, because the day before every election, I gotta pull everything out of the nooks and crannies in the closet, and the closet's already so tight. I wind up moving boxes and things and, you know, hauling it in the hallway is all loaded with voting stuff.
She said so many people in that hallway with all that equipment there, it's been tight.
It's been very tight.
For the public, it's not been a good.
Dave, you got a line on this piece of equipment?
Linda's getting that squared away through somebody in town that used to purchase them.
I just spoke with him, and he said that he did check with his people in Tilton yesterday. There's nothing to be had up there. Because of COVID, there's a shortage of them. There's, you know, some for rent, but not for purchase. He's gonna make a few more calls tomorrow. He's thinking ballpark, maybe thirty-five hundred, but he'll know more after he makes his calls tomorrow, but he will keep me posted. He knows we're interested in, in getting this.
I would say, I would recommend sooner than later, because it'd be nice to have storage right after the election. There's no reason to wait on this one.
Yeah, I know, I rent one. It's seventy-five dollars a month. They're very cheap, you know, rent, so that's another option. If we can't purchase one at a good price right away, maybe we'll rent one for a period of time and purchase it later in the year when we have more time to shop.
See if it, see if it works for a year.
Because you did find one somewhere, right? Linda from twenty-three or twenty-five?
I saw one on Craigslist, I think.
They're, they're quite a bit on the internet. They're all over the place, on the Facebook Marketplace, on the, because I look all the time. They're all over the place.
There's different grades of them. You gotta be careful exactly what you buy. Were you gonna have this for a long time? I recommend you probably get it one trip. I, I just ordered one, so I, I got one that I was waiting for a delivery date.
Will we take that one?
I was just gonna ask.
So, do you buy yours, chief?
I am gonna buy, yeah.
This year's close to four?
Yeah, it's gonna be around four with delivery.
Yeah.
Twenty feet?
Yeah, it's twenty footer, single, single shipment, you know.
How do you transport that? If we, I wanna make sure that Woody's gonna be able to transport all that stuff. Would you unload it and put the stuff in your vehicle?
Into the pickup truck, right.
Okay, you wanna take the whole container?
It's a recorder. It's a storage pod, so it's around level.
All right, just, just dumb question. I just wanted to.
So, do you have a question?
Yeah, well, I'm wondering if you rented, would you, that money that the government's allowing be available later if you wanna buy one, or do we have to shell out?
We have, we have that amount of money.
But you might have to give some of that back, right? What you don't use, you gotta send back, right?
No, the nonparticular one, the nonprofit one, they, they're giving us the five thousand, and we have to do our best to show proof that we've spent money for safety.
You gotta send them a letter saying we're planning on doing this in the future, or?
Or one thing we could do is possibly order it, even though we don't receive.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm wondering if, if it's gonna cost us more in the long run if we wait.
I spotted that too.
So, I just wanted to put it in front of the board tonight to get consensus if we move forward on it or not.
I, I'd say sooner than later, Dave.
Yeah, same thing.
You guys are happy storing it like in one spot and?
Well, like, if you're storing it at the transfer station, it's one, one stop, they load up, go over and.
Yeah, they don't have to run around, get it different spots, because there was some talk about using the storage on the second floor of the town hall.
Well, there is a room upstairs that has room.
There is, but there's, it's carrying it up and downstairs and.
Push comes to shove, if you had to put it somewhere, there is a place for it, you know? But if you can get a container, that makes it a little simpler.
And it's, it's curable too, yes?
Everybody has stuff all over the place already.
Right.
You gotta start, you know.
And that's why we can add to those five containers I already have at the school, because that already looks.
Everybody's got stuff all over the place.
And that closet is full as it's now.
There it is. Okay, so we have consensus. Woody, maybe you could give Linda a hand shopping for her?
Thanks, Woody. I love to shop.
Although it hurts already.
I have a few more election things before, before you go. I just had a question. Do you, do the selectmen need me to make up any appointment papers for our selectman pro temp? Have you got anybody? Were you thinking of doing that?
I plan on coming up for the whole day.
I thought I'd point Rainy to cut it for me.
Yeah, there you go.
I may have to leave a couple of times as. You know, I have an issue that I gotta take care of.
It'll be helpful to me to know when you're not gonna be there. Our staffing is really thin.
Very tight.
So.
We'll come and let you know.
Yes, like right now, I'm hoping, because I've got.
Well, I don't really wanna speak about it in the open, so I could tell you Monday afternoon, but it looks like I may be leaving around noon. Then I might stay right till seven and leave for a short stint.
Okay.
Because it's necessary.
That's, yeah, it's, why do you need to go or any of that? I don't need it.
Rainy, I, I think we can, we can work around on lunch, lunch half hours or forty-five minutes around until we can cover a couple of, in, in other words, there'll never be more than, less than three selectmen, less than two selectmen there, so.
I've got all three of you at a post, at separate posts all day.
Okay.
So, if any of you leaves for any amount of time, I need to know so that I can have someone ready to step in for you. You're not gonna be able to step in?
No, I understood, understood.
Okay, so that's all I need.
Yeah, no, I'll be gone for maybe, maybe an hour at noon time.
Okay.
And then at seven, I may leave for half hour or so, and then I'll be back.
Yeah, seven, after seven, actually, it's a little easier, because things settle down a bit. Dave, will you be able to stay all day? Because you've also had to leave sometimes.
Unless you get something brought to us.
You know, I haven't made any arrangements for this.
No, there was box lunches last time. Thumbs up.
We're gonna do that. I haven't had time to, I'm just gonna download some choices, and then I'm gonna email everybody, so check your email over the weekend from time to time. I need to let them know twenty-four hours in advance with the orders.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes.
Kiss philosophy, not too many choices. Keep it like maybe three, or two or three, but just don't go crazy with too many choices. It is, I mean, this is a restaurant we're going to, I, I mean, in the sense that you were giving them a box lunch, A, B, or C, choose one.
I gotta tell you, the poll workers, I loved it, the Kiss method, that the poll workers were so happy to have a choice on the choice. And, and it was no big deal. Once they told me what their choice was to send it, yeah.
I haven't seen anybody really go overboard.
No, nobody, if you want to send at a dollar amount, like ten dollars a meal, twelve dollars a meal, if you wanna set that, I can say, order anything on the menu for this much money, if you wanna set that.
I don't think it's been an issue in the past.
I think we gotta hold off the half carats only, not half bottle, not half bottle, not a full bottle, just half carat.
Half carat, got it. Okay, so just watch your emails. I'll be sending you the choices. Nobody's gotten to me and asked me about any tables, Garden Club, Reeds Across America.
I can tell you, I've been putting the word out that we're most likely not gonna have any of that going on at this election.
That's probably.
Don, can Don talk to you?
Um, and um, he brought the idea of a table outside along the walkway, the exit walkway. And I went down and looked at the, at that today. They could do that, but they'd have to be on the grass. They'd have to be off of the walkway to leave enough room for someone to stop and look at their display and someone else to walk behind them. But if they're willing to have a display out, it's out in the elements. Um, if they're willing to do that, that's okay with me.
Okay.
The uh, the weather was predicted pretty good that day.
Okay.
Good weather, so I'm I'm not gonna be an issue.
A a small blizzard only?
Don't need a small blizzard. Two to three inches only.
Just a minute, just a minute. So nobody's asked me about absentee ballots. How many? Anybody wanna guess?
Four hundred.
Not even close.
Eight seventy-five.
All right, very well. So we have five hundred and ninety-four that have been sent out. Five hundred and thirty-nine have been returned, so we've got fifty-five outstanding.
That's, that's so impressive that that many have come back already.
Isn't that amazing? There's another um, what's that?
Twelve dollars a piece?
If that's what we get, yeah. So anyway, um, we have a lot of absentee ballots coming back, which is just so great. We talked before about having somebody go to the post office close to five o'clock. I don't think that's necessary. We're already short.
I'm hearing on TV that they're gonna count some of the ballots coming in several days later.
That's other states.
Other states?
I've not heard that in the neighborhood.
That confuses the heck out of people. We may even have some people coming in to uh, watch us on the partial pre-processing.
Yes.
Which we'd like to.
Which I welcome.
Yeah, we welcome that too. And Lee, are you coming for that? Thank you.
Good plan.
And I think that was, that was all I had. Just wanted to give you an update on that. Back in just a little history, two thousand sixteen, the last presidential, we sent out a hundred and twenty-five absentee ballots. To our five hundred and ninety-four today.
Yeah, I just, you know, COVID's causing most of that, I would think.
That that might just help the congestion.
I'm hoping it will. I'm hoping it will.
So, you know, on on day of election, um, we're gonna be dealing with COVID. That sets up a whole different kinda scenario. There may be all sorts of other distractions going on. Um, I expect if they do, they'll be outside, uh, not within the polling place. But I I I find myself, I keep reminding myself, we have been down this road a bunch of times together. What have we done? Like, this, yeah, this group, we've done like sixteen elections. So um, you know, we've got a lot of experience in a room and we're gonna be fine. I think the the biggest thing is for us not to get flustered. Don't get worked up. And just um, if something weird is happening, you just say, you know, we'll figure it out. Especially upfront, if something weird is happening, just give me a call. And that's what we did the last time.
Exactly.
We worked everything out.
We also just wanna remind everybody that we are all, every town, every city is really under a microscope with this election. And the biggest thing is nobody should be turned away no matter what. So if anybody, if you, especially as a greeter, where you see people before they come in, if you think there's any issues at all, please get Rainy or fight.
It's our MO. I think it's, we we tag him in.
We had, we had brackets of that in September.
Yep. And I think is, I I recall that, as I said before, there's one person who walked away without willing to listen to what I was gonna say, and they walked away completely, just didn't ignore me. And that was, I hate to say their fault, because we were accommodating.
We'll have more signs this time so that um, people won't get caught by surprise, I hope. Chief, does uh, Joe work in the poll?
He is.
Kudos to him. He did a good job last time, especially at the uh, at the table at the end, at the county. I look forward to working with him again.
And additionally, there's a difference between being rejected or being told we can't vote and someone walking away from the vote and choosing not to vote.
Yeah.
Because of conditions, you know, and that's the one you experienced.
Yeah, we've got options for just about any kind of concern that any voter comes with.
You addressed everyone at the last election. Even people that uh, didn't like the idea of having to wear a mask, chose the lesser of voting.
They, they have options, yeah.
And so they got a choice and they voted. And the people that walked away, walked away. I mean, there's not much you can do. We've offered them every situation, covering every situation.
Yeah, and as as best I know, it's not people who walked away, it's person.
I believe in both. Right now, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, are we all set?
Yeah, I bet we're fine.
Thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Woody, for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
See you Monday.
Um, we are gonna talk a little bit about budget or strategy, if you guys want to.
Okay, I guess.
I'm off the hook.
Good night, all.
See you, man. Okay, we wanna review the revised revenues next, I guess.
Okay, the um, form that you're looking for is the twenty twenty MS four thirty-four R's. And that would be the uh, revised adjusted revenues that I would go over line by line with the Department of Revenue, and we did that yesterday.
Okay.
You can see in the middle column, I've highlighted uh, the yellow items that changed during the conversation. There was small adjustment under other taxes that was removed for a thousand dollars. Um, the meals and rooms tax distribution came in revised at one forty-seven, two oh three, so it's an increase of twelve thousand, two oh three. The highway block grant budget was ninety thousand. It was revised to one oh two, seven eighty-nine. That's an increase of twelve thousand, seven eighty-nine. And there were no changes to the remainder of the numbers that were reported to the DRA on that form. So our revised total comes in at from just the general fund, two, one million, two seventy-eight, three eighty-nine. And then on this third page, they add the unassigned fund balance um, as a total. They uh, include the voted from fund surplus, fund balance of three oh nine, and then they um, list separately the uh, fund balance retained after using some of the uh, fund balance through our warrant articles. Uh, so the total revenues and credits that will be applied to the operating budget is um, five, one million, five hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and six dollars. So the net assessment for the local town to be raised from taxes is one million, three seventy-five, six forty-six.
This is a final copy?
That is a final copy. That's something that the DRA will adjust accordingly with numbers that um.
That fund balance is the warrant articles?
Those would be the warrant articles that were uh, applied to the operating budget and warrants.
Okay. All right, I'm good with that.
I was hoping to have the preliminaries hatch rate for you. Um, it was getting on late in the day. They had to verify some trustee property transfers, so all I have for you currently is an estimated um, proposed tax rate for twenty twenty. I don't know if you wanna wait until it's official, or you wanna just go over it?
Um, I think, why don't we review it? Cause I think it'd be very close to that lean, so.
I think so too.
We'll go over it tonight and then get people to.
Okay, so in two thousand nineteen, our property values were three hundred fifteen millions, three hundred sixty-five, nine hundred and fifty-three. After the revalue, we increased that total by seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, sixty-five to bring our twenty twenty revalue assessed totals to three hundred ninety-four thousand, three sixty-three, eighteen. With that, um, the pieces that comprise the tax rate are the local school, the state school, the county, and the town. So I reviewed the um, local schools, warrant article presentation, discussed briefly the revisions from their revenues that uh, were going to change. And that reduced their net to raise from taxes to five million, eight fifty-four, oh seventy-four. And if you look, if if you happen to come across the two thousand and nineteen tax rate, it's very comparable to what was set for two thousand nineteen. Last year, the local school was five million, three eighty-nine, six ten. So that would explain the passage of the articles that can be passed in March, which is about five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So with that, compare, uh, multiplied by the new revenue that we have for taxable revenue, it brings their tax rate to fourteen dollars and eighty-four cents, which is a decrease of two dollars and twenty-five cents. The state school, the town receives a one-sheet education tax warrant, um, and that came in at six hundred ninety thousand, four seventy-one. Multiply that by our new um, property assessed value, that um, brings that state school rate at a dollar seventy-five, which is a decrease of seventy cents. The county does the same thing. They send us a one-page um, property county tax, and that came in at one million, thirty-seven thousand, six seventy-six over last year, which was nine hundred and uh, sixty-six and change. So that brings their tax rate portion to two dollars and sixty-three cents, which is a decrease of forty-four cents. And then with these new revised revenues that we discussed tonight, the net for raising from taxes for the local town, the town portion is one million, three seventy-five, six forty-six, which is three dollars and forty-nine cents, which is a reduction of a dollar eleven. So the overall tax rate is twenty-two seventy-one. The board did vote uh, sixty thousand and to be put in overlay, which adds fifteen cents to the tax rate, brings it to twenty-two eighty-six. And then we have to add the war credits, that is equivalent of sixteen cents. So if you add those two items, the adjusted estimated tax rate for twenty twenty is twenty-three dollars and two cents.
Which is down four dollars and nineteen cents over last year's tax rate.
Correct.
You know, with the lesser values of the homes. So I like what I see so far here on this list here and you know, it should, should keep the tax rate fairly flat. I'm thinking throughout, I'd have to do the exact numbers on it.
Well, you have to look at what the increases were and if that portion is from taxes. So looking at the local school, we know that in March, we voted that five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Even just that alone, if they had a flat operating budget, that is an increase.
It would have been, I'm sure.
And that's what you would have to look and calculate as a tax rate.
Is no more additional mupings coming back from schools to the, to the farmers?
That, well, with these numbers that they, I reviewed with the state today, she said that on, if you look at the budget that was proposed in the town report.
Okay.
Um, the original revenues that they had on their warrant article was set at two hundred fifteen thousand, four oh seven.
Okay.
The new number with some surplus and return to the town is three hundred forty-five thousand, two twenty-nine. So that increased a hundred and fifty thousand roughly. And then I looked at the um, uh, state education grant. They had estimated it to be one million, four twenty-two, five oh six. I just located that at the DRA website that came in at four, one million, four eighty, two eighteen. So that's an increase of fifty-seven, seven, twelve. So the combined hundred and fifty on the revenue, increase of fifty-seven on the uh, state education, uh, lowered there um.
Okay, good.
So I think that um, the numbers look really good.
What's it, what's it, I'm going.
I'm sorry. So that's it on the tax rate. Um, Lean's gonna get the hard numbers tomorrow on it, so for our next meeting, we'll have the actual tax rate that had been filed.
I'll get that out on the website, cause the tax bills will be going out early next week.
My, my question was the timeline, so you were up there.
Yeah, yeah, and then I will be contacting the Board of Assessors to sign the warrant for that.
Excellent.
But I'm happy to see it in that uh, in that rate, because now if you look at the difference in values of people's homes that have gone up, that thirty to thirty-five percent or twenty-five percent, and you look at the difference in tax rate, now, it shouldn't be as much of an increase as I had thought, starting out with the differences in the school most likely. So now, going on from that, let's look at the revenues Lean for the town.
Okay, so these numbers here are what we had used to set the projected budget and the projected revenues. Again, this is what's in our current system. We had voted, the board had voted not to make any drastic changes to our revenues, which is common practice from previous boards, but we did have to adjust for the rooms and meals and the differences of the of the highway block grant. So those were given and they have to be added there. In your numbers here, there are two lines that um, you, the board approved for expenditures. One is the sale of a town vehicle, thirty-four hundred, and the other one is three hundred dollars that is collected from the sale of cornerstones. That's on the second to last page. And that's like a pastor. The, the cemetery trustees will get a quote from the cemetery cornerstone. We get a check from that person, but it technically pays for those cornerstone. So if I subtract, um, is there another one? Oh, um, the FEMA on page three at the top, two thousand, six sixty-four, that's money spent from Gopher. So there are other, there's money within that two, twenty-six, sixty-four that is mostly gone. So even though it's included in our total on the last page, nine hundred eighty-two thousand, there is about six thousand that you have to back out because that will not lapse to surplus.
No, it was, they were unanticipated revenues, but we spent it.
Correct. You gave authorization to do something with it during your meetings. So I have to enter some of these in our budgeted revenue accounts, but you will not see that as part of your total that you.
And then you're.
Right.
Right. Lean, we only have one current use?
Um, that is still outstanding. Oh, and I didn't add that to that, so I just have to wash for this spent, spent money. Um, one is pending in the Board of Assessors basket as we speak. That's a thirteen thousand dollar penalty. You get fifty percent of that, so that will be entered into this when they do a tax purge.
And you said there was another seven thousand dollar one, or is that the?
No, that's the total. So it's, even though it says a hundred percent there, there will be a, some revenues.
So all the lots that were newly built on lots, we only had one in the current use?
This year, yeah.
Wow, okay.
Yeah. Um, and then what's outstanding that I kind of um, rounded, I looked at the attack, at the town clerk revenue for vehicle registration for October, which hasn't been merged yet, November, December, and those three for two thousand nineteen came in at one sixty-three, seven oh one. So I just lowered, rounded it down to a hundred and fifty. So that put us at one million, two hundred ninety-two, four twenty-two. And our projected budget is one million, one forty-one, nine forty-seven. So we're above by a hundred thousand. Then I feel comfortable that we'll be able to meet those numbers. So then anything over and above what we just set the tax rate with that we're using, which was projected in last March, you're gonna have additional funds lapse into surplus.
This year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I apologize if I'm taking this off. I can't talk and breathe at the same time. All right, so that's the. Okay, I also have asked the board to potentially consider discussing the strategy for twenty twenty-one. The reason for that is in your packet, I've given you a, a manila folder. That will have your traditional town meeting dates. And then I've also started my October, which is tonight, through March calendars, which outline important dates. So between November and the second week of January, we only have eight selectmen's meetings to go over the budgets. I've already created my worksheet in the system, so that is ready to be broken down and distributed to the departments as we've done in the past. It's just a matter of.
Eight's included tonight.
No, and tonight will be an extra one. I'm not making it tonight. If we go through.
Looking at your calendar here.
Right, but if we go through, uh, I, excuse me.
Me, thanks, good evening.
In January, three, there's four possible budgets, but we do not wanna use those.
You've got October, November.
Right.
And you've got four on that page, and you've got three on the next page.
Correct, but January, we typically have bussed up everything. And if I'm. And if I'm marking them as potential budget meetings, but you'll be stressing me out if we get to the end of January, and we haven't set the budget yet. So ideally, we'd be looking at three weeks in November, three weeks in December, and one week in January. And that would be a real comfortable place for us to be and give you guys enough time to look at the whole budget combined.
Okay.
So you can either keep those in your folder, in your baskets. One other thing that I did want to point out, and I will send it out with the memo and their worksheets. I was advised, in order to make sure that we have enough to cover the budgets of the departments to count Fridays, which are the pay periods, that we would be required to disperse monies from their operating budget, and I counted 53 Fridays. So I'm going to be including a note to the department heads that they should include 53 weeks in their budget. And that's all I have, I believe.
Okay. Thanks for putting that all together for us, Lean. And getting that tax rate squared away. So I think we've gone over a couple of different things. We've done our, we've looked at the revised revenues, the preliminary tax rate, and the budget strategy.
Well, the budget strategy should be more topical.
Right. We're going to, Lean's going to do a letter similar to what you had her do last year to send out with her packet for all the different department heads.
I would just like, I think we got left out room and mails taxes being as high as they were. And I would anticipate slim pickings next year from the state. I would not assume any major increases on our budget lines for those.
So we'll adjust our revenue numbers down at the point when we set ours.
Right. But when it goes down to department levels, I'm looking at level services and with minimal capital, continued maintenance. We have to continue the maintenance.
Right.
But capital expenses, we got to keep a tight look at.
And we are going to, you know, we are going to look at capital expenses committee here as well a little later on in our meeting. So we'll talk about that then. But I think the level services, we'll look at the letter you sent out last year and review that for our next meeting and.
Bob, how do you feel about that level service?
Yeah, I would narrow that, you know, always.
I'm looking at this.
Services, but at the same time, we got to make, we have to make adjustments to the numbers coming in.
Right.
So I guess another item that the board has to decide on is if there's going to be any pay increases for the payroll.
And what does that do?
Well, it's important for them to be able to set their tax, their budget, if they don't know what that is.
Right.
Well, do you want the good news or bad news? Good news is I'm waiting until November, because it's still below 1% for the average increase in weekly wages.
Okay.
From March of this year to July of this year, wages went down on the average weekly wage. There were no wage increases, no real raises in wages. So I want to see what the Department, US Department of Labor gives us for what the increase in the yearly income is.
It will definitely be less than it was last year.
I can see, I can see no pay raise, or minimal pay raise.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because right now, it shows .9.
Right. So 1% wouldn't be unheard of.
No.
So I don't know what's going to happen, only because the tick and the way, see, you haven't even got the report yet for September, which would come in the end of October. And so I'm waiting for November, because that, the end of November gives us what it is in October.
Right.
So if we give, if I give a memo to the department heads that we work with level services budget, and that the, any pay increases will be revisited, and we'll adjust their payroll lines accordingly at a later time. That allows them to at least start to work on their budget numbers and see where they're, where they come in. And then also, it's important that with the capital improvement plan, we're coming up to the end of the chart that's in our annual report, that they present their warrants during their budget for you guys to consider and add for the warrant.
For example, I know the road agent bypassed it because he just bought a truck. But he's got to start a process with some seed money for a new truck down the road.
We started one for the police department last year. And Woody's got one. Now, during a year like this, you know, those numbers, as Woody did last year and several other departments did, as some departments need it more currently, and other departments just got a new vehicle, we've kind of worked pretty well adjusting that number around between the departments. And I think that will be part of this committee process. We're going to look at the paperwork in here, but as Lean said, there should be a committee that helps look at those needs and puts together a long-term plan. And that should work in conjunction with our master plan and the town's needs and wants for these different departments after speaking with the department heads. So I think, you know, we'll talk about it further, but I think this board will have to develop a committee with different department heads and selectmen's representatives and whatnot, and get a committee going, because the planning board has asked for that to be part of the selectmen's thing, because they're not the ones to develop that capital improvements, even though it's in their umbrella. It's more of a selectman function.
In this town, out of towns, it is a planning board issue. So the thing is, I welcome their input, because I think it would be, they get some good input, it's worthwhile. It generates up the master plan.
Right. So it was recommended at the last planning board meeting that the selectmen develop a committee for the capital improvements program for the town.
We talked about this the last meeting, but we wanted to hold on till tonight. So we were all pressing, you know.
So my thought is, why don't we get a list of names together, and we'll maybe try and tackle the committee members after speaking with some people around town who wants to be on it, who doesn't want to be on it. And.
Well, I'm going to ask, I think these two gentlemen right there would be definitely members. I'm volunteering, you already both.
In your previous, in the previous committees, all the department heads were.
Yeah.
Who participated.
Were participants.
And so the thing is, it's almost a no-brainer. All the department heads, and then maybe key planning board member.
Yeah.
And I think it's got to be someone other than you.
Yeah.
I have no problem with that. When do you say it's picking it off?
I don't think, you know, talking with the planning board, nothing is pressing, because we do have programs in place. Every department does have now, since we added one for the police department, a capital improvements. But we not only have to look at just the vehicles and the infrastructure of the departments, but also buildings and other things through the town.
Our current plan is supposed to be 2021, so I'm saying the urgency would be springtime.
Right.
So we're, okay.
So I think, you know, maybe set up the committee over this next meeting or so, and then let's, you know, start having an agenda schedule set up with them and where we meet. And make sure that any other meetings that are on our calendars already.
Pencil in, right, early rather than late.
Yeah.
Agreed.
And you know, maybe, maybe more than one of us participates for the initial kickoff, and then we pull back and let one selectmen's rep kind of take care of it from there and come back to the board with a report.
I'm thinking after the election.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be a good time to start. Put a rate in Lean's budget season.
No, no, no. Let's go through the budget season, and then.
So Lean, you're going to start scheduling a couple departments out of town for the budget.
Well, I usually give them first dibs to get on the agenda for the board. So with that, the memo that I plan on sending out tomorrow with the worksheet will be to include level services, add 53 weeks to the pay period, and a CPI to be determined at a later date. So they can get the majority of their budget done, and then we can just modify that pay increase if there's any. But the sooner they get the worksheet in their hands, the easier it is for them to just fill those in. And I think we've really streamlined the whole process. I don't think our departments have any difficulties.
No, in fact, I've been working with, after two years, we've all been working with the departments. They come in, they know their stuff, they know what the issues are.
This last year went real smooth. No double, you know, meetings unless there was something that was a big error, and we didn't have any of that.
I thought, oh, I commend all the department heads for the good work they did.
It was several good years now.
Yeah, you know, for the wage increase, it's kind of difficult, because the average weekly wage increase is at less than 1%. The cost of living increase is at 1.2%, which started out earlier in the year, projected to be 2.54%. And it was, that's just been recently announced, the COLA, at 1.2, I believe. And then you have Consumer Price Index, which should be high, but it's actually low, it's under 2%. And that's your increases, but it's because gasoline goes down. So at one time, that was on the Consumer Price Index. And when it got high, they took it off. And then now, because it's low, they've put it back on there, it's controlling that, so. Yeah. So all those numbers are coming in low, and it looks, it looks like, you know, that people aren't getting as much, or, but it's just a play with numbers.
Agreed.
Okay. We're going to come back. The last thing on our normal town business agenda is health trust. And then we just have mailbox items and a couple of signings of some things here. I think we'll clean up this.
It just wasn't signed in the right location.
Right. Bob signed over here instead of down here.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I signed up above.
Oh, Mike needs to sign here, and Mike, you need to sign two spots.
Oh, mine's not good enough.
You know, with the health trust, did you get a chance to review it?
Yes, I did.
I proposed carrying the same program that we have.
Okay, let me read a couple of things off this, Bob. Health trust updates us every year. And what we can see here on medical rates, there's an overall increase of 6.8%. Dental rates are flat, no change. And short-term disability coverage has got an increase of 4%. Long-term disability has no rate change. No change on life coverage.
We don't offer that through us.
We don't offer that one, so. I think, I think Bob is correct in keeping the same coverage that we elected last year worksheet.
I think we made a lot of changes last year. I don't think we, I let it go for another year. I think the plan's been working okay. Haven't heard too many complaints. I made the, I don't want to degrade any benefits. I think let's keep the benefits as they are. They're a high.
That being said, I'll sign this.
Consensus, we're on consensus then?
Yeah.
Great. Dave?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, we.
When you have, when you've done that, I just have a question about maintenance.
Okay.
Once again, you're.
Yeah.
I'm glad it was you, Dave. Hello's not looking. Dave signing for the town.
Today's date line?
Twenty-nine.
Okay. That's done, that's done. Okay, let's take Woody's question, and then we'll go on to mailbox items.
So my question is, were we even done a lot of building maintenance stuff this year? What's our plan for next year and continue to finish the tail end of this year? And for next year, do we not have one quite yet, because it's still a little early?
We've been a little reluctant to spend too much in there, not only because we didn't know what we were getting for the rooms and meals tax. We just found that out.
Right.
So we do have some money in there to do any maintenance items that we can get to time-wise this year, and/or ones that we can do anticipatory revenues for next year, hold that money for. So if you have any items you think that you could fit in, and you want to come to us, go ahead and bring them to us. And we're going to continue working on some items, or work on individual items.
As I have, we are having issues with that big roof. A big metal roof. The contractor, when it stops raining, we can heat up again once I come look at it.
You have clear panels in there that.
Yeah, we discussed that, and he doesn't want to go anywhere near them. Even, I mean, he'll go up and look, but he doesn't want to go near them, because they are very fragile.
But you can replace those panels and not touch the metal panels.
Right, that's what he's looking into, but he also wants to get out, because we've got water coming in other spots now through the metal, and it's been patched a few times. So he wants to get up there and actually get a look and see what's there.
I know that it's common, Woody, that the longer sheets of metal expand and contract, and they actually work the screws right loose, and the washers have some deterioration. You know, you can either cock them all and/or re-screw them all, but typically, those are the only fixes that I'm aware of.
Yeah. Yeah, he said he'll get up there and look around and see what's going on. And then the little building is doing the same thing the compacted building did, modified pieces and shingles all over the place. And he's going to, he quoted it once, but I told him, you know, you guys had asked for an updated quote on it. It's not a big roof.
Are those trusses?
Which building?
The big roof?
Yes. Yeah, they're like two foot.
One thing about re-screwing, you got to remember, if that's been leaking for a while, you might not have any meat to screw into in some places.
Yeah, or we could get some longer.
Well, sometimes that really rotted out.
Yeah.
Might have to assist or something, you know.
Right.
But anyways, it's something to keep in mind, you know.
Right. They.
So he gets, go ahead and get the quotes for sure.
Yeah, I would take that. I just wanted, I didn't know what the plan was. I don't want to waste anyone's time.
Woody, those are translucent panels you have up there now. They make a polycarbonate with the same profile now, which are much tougher, last quite a bit longer, so. Those translucent ones don't last for long.
They dry out.
Yeah. They disintegrate.
Okay, that's just what I wanted.
Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you. Please tell him I'll get in touch with him tomorrow. Okay, tomorrow evening.
Yes. Chief, do you want to stay for the mailbox items, or do you have something specific?
No, I'll stay.
Okay.
First time I hear anybody have something to leave. We don't get enough customers.
Okay, Mike. We have a historical awareness committee member that would like to.
I'll make a motion.
Vacancy we want to fill.
So, okay, I can make a motion to fill a vacancy with Leon C. Mellon on the circle awareness committee for the period of term ending March 2022.
Motion's been made.
Certainly.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
She's got to go to Lynn and be sworn in.
Yep. Lean, we've got the Gopher grant paperwork in here. Is that just left over from last week?
No, that's actually what I had been working on and finalizing. Originally had submitted, and I was contacted by the Gopher support staff. He gave me some additional tips, some additional amendments. And so the number that was originally submitted was withdrawn, and this was revised. So I'm, it's pending their review, but I believe everything that I've submitted qualifies for reimbursement, and we're looking at a potential $47,000 and change to give.
Okay, great.
Which would, when we get back, would go to general revenues?
You guys accept it and do nothing with it. That's exactly where it will go.
Okay, great. Appreciate your work on that. I've been watching it as you've been developing it, and it's changed some standards.
So the next gold mine will be the absentee ballot?
Well, we have, I did actually give you guys a longer sheet. One, the first sheet is unanticipated revenue that you guys kind of accepted over the calendar year, and a lot of it was allowed to be spent. Combined those unanticipated revenue that the board gave a vote to spend is $13,100. There were two items there, the work, primex workers' compensation. The board decided to do a holiday credit back in June, so we'll see final, last year's was $23,300. We'll see our 2021 workers' compensation budget less than $3,649. And then just a week or so ago, we've got the health trust, and you guys opted to. And then just a week or so ago, we've got the health trust and you guys opted to take it as a check. So that in itself is on this list, is not included in 13,000, but the 4,475 is going into the general fund as unanticipated.
You just made me think of something, Lean, so I'm gonna bring it up now quickly.
Can I just go over the revenue grant while we're at it? So in 2020, we also had additional revenue grant that we applied for. The first two through this Gopher grant were for the first responders, 15,328 that got dispersed directly to the fire department, 16,157 that got dispersed to the police department, and that's 31,485. And then the others below were PPE and other items that we submitted over the quarterly time period, and those combined, I'm anticipating that Linda's second general election postage absentee will come in around six grand. We applied for that CTCL election grant for 5,000 and then along with this one that's pending, so there's another potential $66,307 that we have not really spent a lot, but we have spent some of our operating budget because we've had to take care of business.
Prepaid for stuff, yeah.
So, but it's, it's good to see that at least we're gonna be compensated for some of the stuff that we are spending.
I don't believe it when we get a check.
Okay, what I just give a reminder of is Thanksgiving's coming up, do we wanna do anything for the employees as far as a gift card like we do for Christmas? Just putting it out there.
Yep.
We're gonna have the November schedule here.
I do have a vacation leave, I'll be requesting that week, so that was, I'm glad you gave that, at least you've decided to talk about it.
Well, Thanksgiving is, normally they run the Christmas holiday, we do.
That's when we did the last, did you guys wanna do anything for Thanksgiving one or not? Well, where are we with the numbers? As far as revenues and stuff? Well, I think there's plenty of money in our budget to do something small.
Expenses, we still have, some of the earmark to be spent, but bottom line, we have 31, 32%.
Steve, I, I think it'd be a probably appropriate thing. I would not wanna get a turkey.
Some companies did use to turkeys and some companies do, you know, they do a much larger one during the end of the year, Christmas time, but they do a small one around Thanksgiving. We have like a market basket, 20 or 25 dollar one.
Last year we did the market basket. I got more thank yous for the employees.
Do you guys wanna do something around 25 dollars for?
For all employees.
Include part-timers?
Yes.
The only exception would be no elected officials. I'm serious, I'm serious, because the thing is, I don't wanna have it that.
You don't want Dave to have a turkey.
Thanks, Mike, I was just trying to get a free meal.
Dave, you're welcome, come on over.
That's fine.
No, I think it'd be.
I agree with you, you know, they should all get one. I mean, it's, everybody's been putting up with a lot.
That's what we did during the.
I think last year we gave it to everyone.
Less elected officials, I thought.
I'm good with that. So the consensus is we'll do that, Lean?
Less elected officials, yes.
Than the board.
Less elected officials.
Okay, got it.
Okay, get that out of the way, looking at the calendar, election day obviously is Tuesday. We have a full meeting, obviously we're not meeting on Thanksgiving Day 26. I think that's it on that agenda.
So we're back on the regular schedule?
We are.
Okay.
Yep. The only meeting we're gonna miss is Thanksgiving Day, obviously, yep.
Yeah.
Okay, did you guys go over last week the status levels of the school's operation, whether in green, yellow, or orange?
I think I got that like the day after they met.
So this just shows the different levels, if somebody wanted to see it, we'll have this copy up at the town.
Yeah, I can probably scan it and put it on the.
That would be nice.
It shows the different levels that the school is gonna run under depending on how they run into people infected within the school system, which I think they're already exercising portions of it.
And I don't wanna criticize, right?
Go ahead, Chief.
All right.
Okay, you're all set?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a note in here from the building, planning, and zoning department. The cars that were in the way of the corner of Stark Highway and Everett Road got moved after the chief spoke to the owner. Mr. Hammond was cooperative in moving the vehicles back so we'd get better line of sight coming out of the road, is that correct, Chief?
Yes. And I'd like to thank Bob Mattel for making that happen.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, bro.
Good suggestion.
And thank you, the chief, for talking with the landlord.
Yeah, I asked him nicely and he was very receptive.
I think the cars have always been there, I think he never thought about it.
Yeah, that's probably the case.
And the building inspector is still working on Tenny Hill Road as far as the situation about number of vehicles in the yard. Owner's been cooperative and they're still working together to clean up some vehicles and regger us during some of the ones. And moving some inside.
So to add to that, I didn't happen to see that on the desk, I read it. And yeah, he, the fellow is doing a really good job, actually even had an old big used boat out there.
Yeah.
And he had that removed, so, I mean, he's doing pretty good, he's doing, you know, what he's been asked to do, so.
Okay, great, good to see.
Yeah.
All right, health trust is done and that's done. And we spoke about the capital improvement already. I think that's it as far as the mailbox items go. Now, I will put up one more time for public comment. Go ahead, Lean.
I'm just wondering, are we angle parking now in the parking lot or are we parking straight in?
You didn't see the stripes out there?
I didn't see the stripes.
I parked right next to him, I had a hard time getting straight.
Well, the guy who parked next to me started the process.
How can he park next to you if he started it?
Because, no, I think I came in after him.
All right, we're gonna move on, next subject.
I didn't wanna, anybody's reported, but Greg Miller completed the overhang, the roof over the back stairs at the police station, he did a nice job.
They approved the bill.
Yeah?
Okay.
But you reported that.
I'll stop taking a look at that, that's nice to have done. So hopefully that doesn't keep rotting away over there.
I never thought I'd see it happen.
Or when you, emergency exit in the middle of winter.
Yeah, I would really appreciate that come February, when the, when the ice is sliding off the roof.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's gonna be a big difference.
You know, small things like that go a long way, you know, and.
Oh, yeah.
I think they're good things to get done. Okay, bringing it back, town administrator.
I have nothing else.
You did a lot of talking today, I forgot.
I did.
All right, bring it back to the board, Mike?
Welcome back, Dave.
Thank you.
I thought last week went pretty well, we got a lot of talk about discussion, but I have nothing for the board tonight, I just look forward to an eventful election day.
Right, me too. How about you?
Well, I got one that Mary brought to me from the library, she had to get a locksmith to let her in the back door, the door. And it comes to the fact that he had to work on, on the back door, on that lock, but it needs additional, he got her in, but it actually, the hole was, was bored too small for the cylinder, so when it's cold, that cylinder expands. And it makes it hard for her to get in, so he gave her a bill of what it would cost or an estimate, what it would cost to take care of that. And it was changing that cylinder, cause that's now, because of that expansion and everything, it's kinda screwed up. So changing the cylinder, rekeying the keys to fit the cylinder, cutting that hole so it's the right size for that cylinder and, I think the LCD on here, oh yeah, cutting the hole, everything came into with labor, $150. So she wanted me to bring that up tonight. The other thing is, the rain bounces off that roof and it keeps hitting that cylinder and it gets in there and that's also wearing on that.
Bouncing off the dog's.
Little roof on that, you know, the garage shed roof. I looked at it last Friday when I went over and I think if we got a piece of plexiglass, cause it might be three feet wide, and brought it right down near the roof and you can fasten it up above, just so that when the water splashes, it hits that glass, but you can still.
Didn't we talk about putting gutters on that last year?
You have a gutter that comes down and it brings water down, but the water still comes off that other roof, bounces and hits in that area.
Cause it's too close together, right? And what's coming down here.
So if you put a three-foot piece of plexiglass there, that would keep that water from bouncing in around the door area. And that's, that's a cheap fix too, you know? Maybe get somebody like Greg Miller to look at it.
Yeah.
I think we should approve the rework of the lock, cause those keys, as far as I'm aware, aren't matched to the front door or anything else at this point, so I think we should approve to get that taken care of for.
Okay.
And the plexiglass, I think just have him look at it.
Yeah, he's very reasonable, I mean, the work he did at the police department, he came in on the bid, so we had encumbered funds for, whoa, he came in on there and I just.
I would just wanna make sure it doesn't look hunky, you know?
Right.
Whatever we do.
Yeah, the, I like to have everything rekeyed, I mean, the door rekeyed, not the same keys. In other words, there's enough keys floating around, I have no problem with making new keys.
The new coral.
Yeah, right, I don't want to say, I don't wanna have the same old key fit if we're gonna do it.
Yep.
Just for security reasons.
So she's all set to go ahead and get that work done? I'll just make sure that we have enough.
You want to give that copy to Lean so he'll have it?
Yeah, we'll have enough keys to.
And a plexiglass estimate.
Yeah.
I think it would just be a couple hundred, a hundred, a couple hundred maybe at most.
Anything else, Bob?
Uh, that's it.
Okay, I wanna thank you too for taking care of everything while I was gone last week, I was up north and it was a good little break. I think that's it, I think.
I'd like to make a motion for adjournment 8:22.
Okay, motion's been made.
Second.